Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you please call the role?
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Lisa Deacon.
Here.
Scott Gingold. Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Bealotta Cullen.
Present.
Myrna Eravalo.
Here.
And Kirill Miranchev.
Here.
All right, with six members present, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight, our zoning planner, Melissa Klotz, and who else? The Assistant City Attorney, Mario Tretto. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements, so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are three items on the agenda this evening. One is old business, and one has been rescheduled to a later date. So if you're here for 2626 Rees, please leave. So first of all, we will start with the approval of the meeting minutes from September 5th. Did everyone have a chance to review those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Are there any comments on those meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 5th, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will note that those not voting -- oh, sorry, all those opposed? I will note that those not voting were not here at that meeting. We will now move on to old business, and I will have Melissa bring us up to speed on that old business.
We have a pending vote for 1029 South Boulevard, and where the case left off is that first, there was a motion to approve the side yard setbacks for the house, and that motion was granted four to one, but contained a condition that would basically invalidate the variation for the garage. So with that done, a new motion was made to approve the garage variance, only the garage variance. That motion is currently standing for approval with a vote of two to three. So additional votes are needed for that one. If that motion is approved, then there is another motion on the table for the remaining variance. If that motion is not approved, then it essentially reverts back to the initial motion that did receive four votes. So for the remaining members who were not at our last meeting, does that make sense to you guys?
Yes.
And were you able to review the minutes or video?
Yes. Okay, you're taking my lines. Sorry. No, it's okay. That's fine. All right, so then we just need you to vote on the first motion, which was motion to approve the side yard setback.
I vote to approve. The first on this -- we are not voting on that one, are we? That was already --
Oh, sorry, my bad. Yep, we're going right to the second one, which was for approval of the accessory structure garage without a principal structure.
I would vote yes to that motion, because I think that this applicant -- there was a lot of discussion in the tape that I saw about a self-created hardship, and I think actually the applicant went to great pains to come to zoning and say, "This is what I'd like to do." His lots are really quite large vis a vis a typical lot in Evanston. And so he could have just gone for the remap, but he came to zoning and deferred to their judgment that they would rather he divide his lot in two and seek the variances that he would need. Because the lots are so large, there is quite a bit of discretion as to where other structures can be placed on either of the lots. So I think that concerns that were raised about there being deficient setbacks because of where his house is located on the lot can be readily addressed by an incoming developer who probably would not, or, you know, simple homeowner, who probably would not want to build their primary structure so close to his home, and they wouldn't have to, because there is quite a lot, quite a large amount of land on the lot. So in a lot of ways, I think that the hardship that the Fochs encountered was the result of their deferring to zoning planners and trying to comply with what they thought was best practices. So that's why I would vote to allow the structure. The other thing is, you know, I've done a lot of adaptive reuse, and I have a fundamental problem with destroying structures unnecessarily. If a new owner comes in and wants to use that structure, you've saved really a lot of time and trouble for all parties involved and expense. So I don't really see a problem with letting a new owner make a determination on the secondary structure when they elect to put up their primary structure. So I would vote yes for that.
Thank you. Ms. Deacon?
This has obviously been a difficult case for both the board and the applicant, and that was clear in the discussion that happened at the last zoning board meeting. And I agree with my fellow member that I think staff sent the applicant down an avenue that has ultimately been difficult to resolve for the board. However, I have to review the case as it is before me, and the case as it is before me, I find that I have to vote no, because I don't believe all the standards are met. Specifically, I don't think the requested variation requires the lease deviation from the applicable regulation. My hope is that staff can work with this applicant diligently to come to some resolution, because ultimately, I think the board, from what I heard and from what I believe, is that, you know, ultimately, this is a good proposal and should find a way to proceed. But the case is, as it has been presented, I vote no, because it does not meet all the standards.
Thank you. And so with that, the vote on that motion is now three to four, which is essentially a denial of that motion. So with that, your case has been denied, and I would suggest that you talk to Melissa and try and have a conversation about where to go from here. Thank you. All right, we will move on to the next case, which is 1026 Davis Street. And Melissa, can you read that into the record, please?
Marty Klass, property owner, applies for a special use permit for a commercial indoor recreation facility, Spenga, in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District, zoning code section 61134. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted September 6th, 2017, standards form, plat of survey, property site plan, business summary, interior site plans, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and dapper meeting minutes of September 13th, 2017.
Okay, so first, we're gonna go ahead and swear in whoever is going to speak about this project. So anybody who's gonna speak, raise your right hand. And then, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Fantastic. If you would come up, tell us a little bit about your project, starting with your name and your business address, please. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Marty Klass. I am the property owner at 1026 Davis Street. It's a -- can we scroll?
Back down one.
Yeah. So at that location, I not only own the property, but also have some interest in the restaurants that are there. We have three restaurants. We have Taco Diablo Lulu's on the ground floor, and then we have Five and Dime on the second floor. This is the location, the former town thumb. The building was a little structurally damaged more than we anticipated, so we tore it down and built new, and came up with the following structure all the way. So what you see up there is the second floor, is the rooftop spans the width. If we can scroll up to the first floor plan, on the eastern portion of the property, we have the two restaurants, then we have a corridor that leads you to the stairwell up to Five and Dime. And then the west side of the property is about 4,200 square feet of vacant real estate, in which Kathleen here, who's a Spenga franchisee from Glenview, is looking to open up a location here in Evanston. And so I'm gonna tell, or I ask Kathleen to talk a little bit about the Spenga brand and what she's envisioning for the space.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Smith. So like Marty said, I am the franchise owner of Spenga Glenview. My husband and I have rights to essentially the North Shore from Evanston up to Highland Park, Evanston West to basically Deerfield is kind of our radius. We have rights to open five locations. Over the next five years, our first location opened in Glenview this past March in the Glen Town Center out there. So we've been open almost eight months. And always kind of had our eye on Evanston. My husband is a Northwestern alum. We lived in Evanston when we got married, know the student population well, know the downtown city of Evanston well. So when this space, which really fits our needs, came available, we were very interested. Just some background behind Spenga as a business. So we run 60-minute group fitness classes, so up to 24 people in a class. Like I said, it's 60 minutes. It combines spinning, so like indoor cycling on a bike, strength training, and yoga, all in one class. So it's 20 minutes of each. It's designed to be an efficient workout that provides kind of everything you need in a fitness regimen into one class. So that's the idea behind it. We've had great success in the Glen. And like I said, Evanston really presents a demographic that we think will, you know, enjoy and utilize this brand, this business, this concept. So yeah, we've been working with Marty. I know you guys have seen a lot of our drawings, a lot of our contractor has been super involved. So we just think this would be a really good, a good fit.
Can you take us through the site, the plan of the space?
Yeah.
Just 'cause I'm having some trouble understanding where the locker rooms are relative to other stuff.
So the space, if you think about it, is, it's basically a rectangle going so narrow --
Next one. And then over on the right? Yeah.
Yes. So our workout is, it goes spin, strength, yoga. So literally, you walk in the front door, and if you're looking straight in, the spin area will be the front third, the strength area will be the middle third, and this yoga area will be the back third. Are we on the right one? There we go. So you can see the spin bikes there. So the locker rooms, we don't have locker rooms, per se. We have single-use restrooms, two of which will have a shower in them to provide that component, and they are in the front of the --
Cullen May.
The front of the space, yeah.
So this is spin, this is strength.
Yes, and that's --
This is yoga.
Yep, those would be yoga mats, yeah.
Where does this happen? Where's this?
That is to the north of the spin bikes. So imagine, so that's kind of the street presence of --
Ah-ha! Okay.
Yeah, so that's where you're gonna fit up here.
Okay, okay.
So it goes right here.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Davis, and then this is, oh, come now, excuse me, this is the alley.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Right, so you walk in to a --
So you walk in, and there's a front kind of reception area, and then you would have to go through a door to enter like the studio. So you don't walk in the front door into the studio.
Okay.
And then the bathrooms are out, outside of the studio.
Okay. And where's the kids?
So the kids here, I believe, is on the east.
East.
The east side?
Or right here, yep, just a little further up.
This.
To the right.
Right.
Yeah, kind of just, right there. Shoot.
Ah-ha. Wow, that's tiny. Okay. Okay. All right. I know nobody can see. Okay. And can I ask you some questions about your franchise in Glenview? How long have you had that?
Of course, yeah. We opened March 1st, 2017, this year.
Okay, so you don't have a full year in the books yet.
Correct.
Okay, can you tell me a little bit about how that, how the business is going?
Yeah, so I, to be quite honest, it was, the fitness world is a saturated market, and it was a new brand and a new fitness concept. So it did take some time to establish ourselves. It took about three months of really, you know, generating that awareness, 'cause people just didn't know what it was. You know what I mean? And everyone's into their routines. We did, the beginning of the summer, we saw a huge surge in membership. We did a pretty aggressive promotion, and I think June to July, our membership increased like 360% or something. So we've had that moment where it caught on, and we kind of stabilized, and now we're just, we're continuing to grow. Our membership has grown every month, and, you know, accordingly, our profits have increased every month. So it definitely took some time to get our feet wet to get there, but now we're on a pretty good trajectory, I think.
And your projections for the Evanston location are what?
In terms of?
Of membership.
Yeah, so I think the second location will always be, I hate to use the word easy, but we just, we know a lot more. We'll have a much more coordinated pre-opening plan to kind of drive that awareness component. I know we have some great ideas already in the works where we could tap into the student population, you know, both undergraduate and graduate. So I think just coming in with more of a plan, having done this once before, will really work to our benefit. And like I said, we, you know, we lived in Evanston, we know Evanston, we have a great, two of our instructors live in Evanston. We have a lot of ties to this community, so I think there's a lot of potential there.
So what's your best-case scenario on how many patrons are in this space at one, any given time?
So the class, the class size will cap at 22 people in the class. Our location in Glenview has 24, but this one will be 22. In terms of staff, in addition to the instructor, we have about two to four staff in the studio during a given class time, just kind of depending on, you know, some times of day are gonna be busier than others. So that I would see being the most at any given time, you know, 25 to 30 max.
And are you running a class every hour on the hour?
We're not. So we kind of cluster them, probably what you would expect. We have kind of a morning, a morning block, maybe a lunchtime class, and then an evening block. So there's definitely some dead times, you know, between like mid-morning and then that like two to five window or something, you know? So we work around work schedules and school schedules and stuff like that.
Okay. And what are the parking arrangements? Do you have any parking provided by the --
We do not. And that's something we've considered, just from a staff perspective. We've talked about subsidizing parking in the garages. I know we definitely, we have this issue, and if you guys have been to the Glen Town Center, I mean, parking is not abundant. So we've had this issue where we're not gonna have our staff in the spaces right in front of the studio. So we've talked about, you know, public transportation. Like I said, we have a couple employees who live in Evanston who can walk, and we would do something as the employer to subsidize either parking or public transportation, or obviously being cognizant of leaving prime parking spaces for consumers.
And I know that as an owner of a recreation space, and having gone through dapper, there are concerns about sound.
Yeah.
Particularly related to spinning.
Yeah.
Just 'cause the music needs to be loud in order to make you move.
Yeah, yeah.
So can you talk a little bit about what your approach to that is?
Yeah, so noise, to be quite honest, has been an issue in Glenview, which means that it was at the forefront of our minds with any location, because that's not, it's not a situation anyone wants to be in. We don't wanna be bothering neighbors, and they don't wanna be bothering us.
Right.
Bothering us. So I think we have somewhat of an ideal situation with Marty owning basically every adjoining wall. And I know, I'll let him, 'cause he knows it more specifically, we have plans in place to, I mean, essentially insulate the space, but this is definitely on our radar.
So, excuse me, I've got a cough and cold and compliments to my youngest son, but the east wall there, that abuts the corridor to get to Five and Dime, so we have some drywall there. We'll put another layer of drywall, so that's just gonna kind of limit the amount of sound. But we also then have that lobby in essence, which is an air pocket that will help mitigate any noise and vibration. On the west wall, we will spray foam, we'll put a couple layers of drywall as well, and then we have CMU block, which is about nine inches. And then next to it, I also own the building at 1030 Davis, so there it's a brick building with probably three plies of bricks. I don't issue, foresee any issue there. Up top is the rooftop restaurant, so again, we'll be making noise up there. They'll probably go down to the lower level, so it won't be an issue. To the rear, behind us is an alley, and then behind it is a condo building. But we do have spray foam on that rear wall. We do have the drywall as well. But the nice thing is, the yoga portion is the last portion there at the south, and that has a lower raised ceiling, so it's kind of a drop-down, so it's gonna be a little bit more intimate, a little bit more quiet, and that will also help with the sound mitigation, because you have more layer to absorb that sound that'll be taking place.
Yeah.
What are the hours that you plan on operating this studio?
So the earliest, our earliest class would be between 5:00 and 5:30.
In the morning?
In the morning.
Wow.
And that's kind of dictated by the clientele. In Glenview, you know, we tried a 5:00 AM class, and it was too early, so our earliest is 5:30. You kind of just, you see what people come to in that time of day. I do know, having talked to other local fitness businesses in the area, that evening classes are popular, I assume from more of the student population. So I would anticipate our last class being probably somewhere around 6:30, being concluded for the day by 8 o'clock at the latest.
So you're gonna have like a spin class at 5:30 in the morning? Is that the, is that the class that's early?
Well, so yeah, the classes are all the same, so it's a spin, strength, and yoga class all in one.
Okay.
So yeah, that would be the class in the morning, yeah.
Okay.
Going back to the sound concept, I know that we've had problems with other spin studios here where their, where their studio goes directly to the street.
Yeah.
I think that we're not, because of your reception area and the way that you have all those sort of uses up front, it doesn't really lend itself to opening the door.
Yeah.
'Cause nobody will be able to answer the phone. So I think that you've mitigated that concern well. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I do. You referenced 1030 Davis. Is that the corner?
Yeah, that is the former Studio Media building that's at the corner of Davis and Oak, correct.
And remind me, I know that there's been transitional sort of pop-up uses in there. What's, how is it currently occupied, or is it vacant?
It's currently vacant. I did have a friend of mine, Mark Tenham, use the space for his offices when he ran for mayor.
That's what I recall, yeah.
But then, other than that, it's been vacant since then.
Okay. And is the intention for you to lease the space?
Yeah, that's the intention. So obviously, it wouldn't be another fitness space, because I obviously want Kathleen and Matt to do well, so we're looking at some type of activity-based destination, so be it another restaurant that fills a different niche, or some other type of, like I said, activity-based destination would be great.
And what is the term of your lease for Spenga?
We have a 10-year lease in the works, yes.
So in the unfortunate event that the market isn't as strong as you anticipated and people don't adopt Spenga, what happens to, you know, years X-plus after the business doesn't perform to expectations?
That's a valid question, and we've seen that before happen right now with that fitness place that left E2. I mean, I hope it doesn't happen, you know? Again, it's something I'll have to prepare for, but looking at, and I've gone to their Glen location, I've gone online, I've met some of the people in the company, they really differentiate themselves in terms of the quality of the materials. They're very clean-looking stores, it kind of looks like an i, Apple i store or Apple Store. It's very unique and clean. I think it's neat that Kathleen has a little kid play area to kind of have moms or dads bring a child while they work out. And again, it's capped at 22 people, so it's not gonna be something that's gonna be creating a lot of noise and such, but I do believe that this market will respond to it, just being in a highly-traffic area that we bring with the restaurants, that there'll be a lot of curiosity, and they have a great program, or your first workout is free, to give it a shot. So I do believe that they will succeed in this location, and hopefully will, you know, realize that, so.
And can you speak to the pedestrian experience? So what does a pedestrian experience, is there walking by your storefront?
Yeah, so that was something we kind of went back, we got some feedback about that and went back and changed a little bit, 'cause we had some bathrooms in the front, and then essentially the windows were just frosted. So we pulled all that back, so now you will see the Spenga branding. I don't know if there are any pictures really, but even like down where you see Spenga in black and the green with the white in the background, that's essentially in the bottom right-hand corner. That's the other side.
Right.
Yeah, just the Spenga, just the word Spenga with the green E. I mean, I'm just using it to show, like, that's our logo that's everywhere. It's a very clean, white space. And that's, you know, that's what, that's what you'll see from the outside, is kind of the front desk, our logo, staff, whoever's working there. You won't be able to see inside the studio. That will be all closed off. We've done a couple things in Glenview, like with putting either some pictures or like a TV with a reel on it kind of behind the desk, so if someone's walking by and can just, you know, see kind of what's going on in there. I will say, being in the Glen, there's a significant amount of foot traffic just, you know, during the day, and we do have a lot of people just stop in, you know, and they're not there for a class, they're just like, hey, what's -- So we do put a lot of time and effort into that kind of first image that we give off and how it looks from the outside, 'cause sometimes that's all you get, is you get someone and they look in, and they're either intrigued or they're not, and they keep walking or they stop. So we do put a lot of thought into how we look from the outside, and that branding is important to us, for sure.
Yeah. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Did we get everything? Hours, employees, there's no garbage, there's no pickups, there's no deliveries. You're making this too easy. Yeah, that's everything else. Okay. If you'd like to sum up, you can, or not, it's totally your choice.
Yeah, I mean, just to reiterate what I kind of already said and what I said at the last meeting, you know, my husband and I have been involved in Evanston for a while. We love Evanston, we love the community. We come here a lot, we have three little kids, and just are really excited to kind of, you know, be a part of this community and connect with people in every, in every part of it, from Northwestern to families to, you know, everyone here. So, and we think, we think we'll be a good addition to the city.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead and have a seat. Is there anybody else here who'd like to comment on this particular project? Yes? Then I need to swear you in.
I know you do, I know you do.
'Cause you missed that.
Okay.
So right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Fantastic. Can I have your name and address?
Bruce Boyer, I live at 1518 Oak, a block away from the facility.
Okay.
And I will just say that I'm, when I saw the zoning appeal, it said recreation facility, I had no idea what that meant, okay? And I, now that I'm here and I see that it's a fitness spa, I think the only concern we have in the neighborhood, and you have heard this before and you will hear it again, is parking, okay? Especially with the new building opening up at Maple and Davis with that idiotic decision, I mean, okay, to only allow however many parking spaces. We don't know how this will play out, and everybody in my neighborhood's very worried about it, and we'll see. The fact that you're gonna limit your classes to 22 or 24, it's not gonna be a huge crush, so I think that's probably manageable. So I was here to satisfy my curiosity, and I will say it's been satisfied.
Great, thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate that.
We don't know how this will play out, and everybody in my neighborhood is very worried about it, and we'll see. The fact that you're going to limit your classes to 22 or 24, it's not going to be a huge crush, so I think that's probably manageable. So I was here to satisfy my curiosity, and I will say it's been satisfied.
Great, thank you very much for coming out, I appreciate that. All right, with that, we will go ahead and close the record, and comments.
I think that this is a good plan for that section of Davis Street, and I think that you have a target market in the surrounding condominiums, and certainly the Northwestern students and throughout Evanston in general. The scale of the business is such that I agree that probably assures a greater likelihood of success than if it were oversized. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this project.
Great, thank you.
I also think it's a good project for the location. I think, you know, fitness concepts like this are one of the few retail categories that have been growing, and certainly, it's to no one's benefit to have new commercial space sit empty in our commercial corridors. And so I think to the, to the extent that we can, you know, activate that space, I think they've been thoughtful to the pedestrian experience, which is important. I think they've been thoughtful to mitigating noise concerns. I think it's a good proposal.
Great, thank you.
I like the proposal. I was concerned with the 5:30 AM opening when you talked about the spin class and it being an issue in Glenview, but this guy that was a neighbor, he did not mention, you know, that he was concerned with the noise. So I don't live far, but not that close, so if he's not concerned, I'm not. Also, he mentioned the parking, and recently, I went to that set of restaurants over there, and they have a new parking lot. And so I hope that alleviates at least some of the parking and holds about maybe 24 cars, and maybe that'll do it. So I approve of this proposal.
Thank you.
I like the project. My only concern is, was also the sound, starting so early. Is there a way to limit the morning spin class noise level just a bit?
Is there, is there much in the way of residential use on that stretch of Davis? I don't think there is. I think it's almost-
No, but it'll carry, especially if you have a condo building, the higher you are, the more you can hear it.
I think the closest residential was where that guy lives over at Oak Street. I mean, I think that's the closest to it, and it's not right on the street of Davis, but it is right behind it, and it's a tall condo, you know, for the carrying of the noise.
My sense is that they have addressed that in two ways. One is with sort of the airlock on the front.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm loving that, that's, that's a great idea. I wish everybody would do that. And, and then, as I noted in DAPR, they asked for a soundproof door on the back as well, because that's really the concern. My concern is less going north and more going south. So, and then the spin studio is located to the north side of the property, so I, I think they're doing everything they can short of, you know-
I'm just saying, take-
Rev and two stick panels.
If the volume is a little bit lower versus, at 5:30, versus it being at 5:30 in the evening, which is, you know, prime time.
Right.
That, that's all.
I just want to point out that our Evanston noise ordinance is 7 to 7. I'm just pointing that out, not like this would violate it or anything, just saying, that's what it is.
Great, thank you.
I will support the project, it's a good project. I simply have some small advices inside. I don't know your business, but I see that you don't have a single office, do you need or you don't? You don't have anything that your instructors will just relax for the time they don't have classes. So that's the second thing. You may have some more space for people to wait, or people that cannot stand the 60 minutes, that they want to go out and wait for something. So these are small things inside. I would advise you to take a look at your ventilation system, because this is a problem usually for gyms and such kind of facilities. I don't know how adaptive it is for your needs. And if you are looking for good materials, there are materials that can dump the sound a little bit without making it unpleasant inside, but they will block it going outside. And it's something like simple gypsum board of a better quality. And you can use something on the ceiling too about that. So these are just advices for inside, otherwise, everything else is okay with me.
Great, thank you. We are a full-service zoning board. We'll give you advice on everything.
Mary Beth, a couple additional questions.
Sure.
I saw from the DAPR minutes, there was a suggestion or a question about a bike rack. Is there a plan to put a bike rack here?
Oh, you can't, sorry, we've closed the record. You can't, you can't answer.
I think that there, that, that is such, because of the public transportation and everything else, that is such a heavily-traffic street, I would be surprised that the city would want that obstruction to the pedestrian traffic.
No, I think they were, I think they were asking for it. I think-
But is that, can that go? Can that go in the spot?
I think we can have, I think we can have that resolved with staff. Between staff and the applicant.
Yeah.
On, based on what is the desire of community development. And you're nodding, so I can't hear the rocks in your head. Yes? Okay. All right. I happen to agree that it's a great, it's a great location. I actually like it, sort of kitty-corner from another one of the fitness spots that we just approved a couple months ago. I think that that sort of gathering of, of the uses will actually bring more people to that and start to get them trading off between doing things. So I think there, there's a, there's a real potential there. And then, you know, once you work out, you get to go drink, so there's always that. So let's go through the standards for special uses. There are nine of them. And one, it is one of the special uses, specifically listed in the zoning ordinance, and it is. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted Comprehensive General Plan, and the zoning ordinance is amended from time to time. One of the main goals of the comprehensive plan is to strengthen our economic base and clearly bringing new development into otherwise empty storefronts certainly does that. And this particular use, as noted by Lisa, is one, seems to be one of these sectors that is performing very well right now. And so I think having that in the downtown is going to be a great opportunity as well. So I think that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Now, we did have the one neighbor ask about parking, but what he didn't mention, which I found telling, was any parking issues related to the other fitness facility across the street, which means he hasn't seen any issues on the street. So I would expect a similar situation to happen for this particular location. Furthermore, there is city parking just north of the block and over by the post office, and people who work out generally walk. So I think that there's, I don't believe that there'll be any cumulative effect on the neighborhood, a negative cumulative effect. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. As we all know, a, an active storefront is a good storefront, and it, and it increases the value of adjacent properties. So this will certainly add to the property of the, the value of the properties in the neighborhood, so that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It doesn't have any undue stress on any of the utilities that serve that particular location, and it certainly is served by Metro and CTA and bus routes. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. That goes back to my comment about number three, which is neighbors have not noticed that there has been a, an uptick in traffic based on one of the other uses, so I don't believe that we will feel that in this case as well. And there is additional parking located nearby, so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural recesses, resources. I don't believe that that standard applies. And number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. That standard also does not apply. And number nine, it will comply with all other applicable regulations, which they must do in order to open, so. I believe that that standard has been met. So can I have a motion with a couple of conditions, right? Employees can't park on the street, hours from 5:00 to 10:00, I believe that's what we gave the, the place kitty-corner. You don't have to use all those hours, just giving you an opportunity. And in substantial compliance with the testimony on record. Is that it?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. In the case of 1026 Davis Street, ZBA 17ZMJV0079, I recommend that we approve the special use permit. I'll send this on to City Council with the conditions of the employees parking in other locations in the street, the hours being approved at 5:30 AM to 10:00 PM. Is it 5:30?
No, 5:00.
5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and that the property be developed in compliance with your testimony here.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With 6 to 0, you go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project. All right, so next was going to be 2626 Rees, but that's been moved, and I couldn't- Oh, I'm so sorry. Yep, 2626 has been rescheduled, and so it'll be re-noticed for a later date. Melissa's going to have to speak to that.
The applicant is further reducing the variations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have other business? The only other business was, uh, 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 plan amendments, plan commission amendments. Text amendments.
We pulled that off to instead do a ZBA training focusing on the standards.
Yes, but I just want to keep that out there, that if you've got things, we're going to get back to it.
We will revisit text amendments.
She doesn't have enough on her plate, so we're going to throw some more on her plate.
We will focus on the most important, very few text amendments.
Porches. Porches, second floors, seriously, second floors. Okay, all right. So now we're moving on to number six, which is discussion and some ZBA training.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Are we being recorded for the training?
It is still part of the meeting, yes.
Okay, just wanted to.
We're still an open meeting. No. Oh, yes, you can have a bag, sorry. Why do I not wear your glasses? I have them on my eyeballs. I have them on my eyeballs.
Melissa. The meeting, so the presentation is not part of the meeting?
Oh, do we want to adjourn?
Yeah, it's not, it's, so basically, it's a training session for everyone.
Okay, all right. So ma'am, can I have an emotion, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.